All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting, 8:30 a.m., Wednesday, July 14, 2021. Thank you for being here, and I'd like to bring up Pastor Don Steriano, Kingdom Life Christian Church, for our prayer. Please stand.
Good morning, everyone. Before I pray, I just wanted to say how special all of you are in the eyes of God. And I'm going to make this brief. For a message to be eternal, it doesn't have to be everlasting. But I've had people from around the United States, other pastors and leaders have been visiting our church, and every one of them, when they leave here, they say to me, when they go into the city of Bradenton, they feel something very special that they don't feel everywhere where they travel. And I just want you to know that God has His hand on you, and He has His hand on this wonderful city. And what's happening here and the job that you're doing, heaven is paying attention, and you're doing a great job, and God is in your corner, and He's cheering you on, all of you. Would you bow your heads? So, Father, we love you, and we give you glory and honor, and we welcome your presence, and I thank you for these that have chosen to serve. I pray, Father, that you would bless them on every front of their life, their families, their health, their finances, and the decisions that they will do today as they govern the things of heaven on earth. So I pray for this proceeding, that there would be unity, there would be honor, there would be kindness, and even in disagreement, Lord God, there would be love. I pray that you would bless them all, bless this time together, all that are here to share their thoughts in their heart for the beautiful, friendly city of Bradenton, Florida, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will call the meeting to order. We don't believe we have any proclamations or presentations, but I would like to, before we get any further, is just recognize that our administrator, starting on July 19, is in the audience, Rob Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody.
Yep, so we'll be going around today and kind of introducing him to staff and that, and then on Monday morning, have a little, maybe a presentation with him for if anybody wants to come and meet him that hadn't met him in the morning, and we'll get Jeannie to send something out on that as we go. We appreciate it. All right, citizen comments. Of course, citizen comments will be accepted at this time. On any non-agenda item, comments will be accepted on the public hearing and agenda items at the appropriate time. So we have one for non-agenda. Glenn Jebelina, come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
For the record, Glenn Jebelina. I'm here to talk about policy today and some of the things that are concerning me the most. So there was a termination letter to my service to the Affordable Housing Board, and I'm kind of confused, and "we" will not be reappointing. I don't know who that is. I've asked you to explain that to me, but you haven't. So I'm going to speak about things that should matter to this for the folks that are out there. So... Mayor, you're leading the city in a right direction, and I thank you for that. However, on this issue of reappointments, we could not be farther apart. I do this as a public comment, more for the public and other advisory board members than for folks in this room, but hopefully you'll understand my concerns. It's important that the public understands the policy that is already set in place. When personalities and politics override professionalism and qualifications in making decisions, that is bad governance, plain and simple. This letter was not only sent to me, but will be sent out to every advisory board member that comes up behind me and will receive regardless how well they did their jobs, and that's who this message is for. It doesn't matter that this policy set in place will never get a board member that's reappointed regardless of how well that board has worked together in the past. It doesn't matter that current board members will not be appointed. It doesn't matter that there are no applications for Profit Builder, and there's one for that. So my seat is vacant, and apparently it doesn't matter. Would rather see the seat vacant than continue aboard, and that's exactly what happened. We don't have a quorum because my seat is vacant. That's bad policy. That's just bad policy. I think it needs to be reconsidered, and that, you know, you're doing it all for the wrong reasons. You should never leave a seat vacant regardless of your personalities and what you think about it. So who's the "we"? I don't think it's the board members. You guys don't get the way in on reappointments from my Affordable Housing Board. Bill doesn't even get the way in. You should be part of that decision. And quite frankly, I looked at the charter. It is so poorly written that I really believe, I interpret it, that you can't have it both ways. You can't have it both ways. When you say you're going to keep the powers of the police chief and you vote no on that, then you vote no on advisory. So I'm not sure even the jurisdiction is here today, but all these things, it doesn't matter with this bad policy in place. It needs to be rescinded or retweeted, but you should not place that burden on all the advisory board members coming up behind me that are going to get the same letter. It's a bad policy. It should be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number six. Camera, is there any other agenda item comments that we've got yet? I saw someone filling out a card.
We have one, but it's for the playground.
Okay, but that is on the consent agenda?
No, it's on the agenda.
Oh, it's on the agenda, Colm. Okay, good. All right, is there any other citizen comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda, but I do have a comment.
Okay, is there a second?
Actually, I want to pull item M. And I'd like to pull item E.
Okay.
If the second will agree to have those items pulled, then I will agree with that motion.
I'll agree.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve consent agenda items excluding E and M?
Yes, sir. And my comment is...
End comment, okay.
Going through the special event applications, we have a policy in the city that if you have a special event in the city and the crowd is of a certain magnitude, you are required to have additional police officers there. They must be City of Bradenton police officers if the event occurs in the city limits, and I received a couple of event applications where I don't think the individual understood that. I think it would be of benefit to make sure that the police department gets notified of these events. I know we have somebody on the special event committee from the department, but I don't think the chief was aware of this. So Chief, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. We had a few conversations yesterday, and we've worked all that out, but what we're going to be coming forward with is suggested change to that permitting process, whereas the police department has contacted in advance of you all signing off on that so that we can work out with the promoters, you know, if they're going to have alcohol, the size, what have you. Right now, they're getting approved before they even have to call us, and so I know that we had brought this forward a few years ago, but we're going to just recommend some updates to the form and bring it back to you all, and we think it's a pretty easy tweak, but something even, and I don't know if either you or I caught it, I think they're saying that they're only expecting a total of 1,500 people and that the demographics are men, 77% over 55 years of age. I'm not really sure how they could come up with that for a...
For an arts and crafts show.
For an arts and crafts show. But I think that information should come to us in advance. Let us vet this. Let us give them an idea of what we think their needs are going to be. We know there's going to be a lot more people than 1,500 over the course of a couple days, but so stay tuned on that. But we've got this issue worked out on both of those events.
Okay, anything other comments? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Barnaby, second by Mrs. Coker, to approve consent agenda items except for E and M. Any further discussion? Start the vote in Ward 3.
Yes.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
Thank you, carries 5 to 0. All right, Mr. Roff, you had brought up first about M.
Yeah, M. So this is a signed approval for the Realized Bradenton event. I did a little research on this, and this started out, my first correspondence through the CRA was 4/27/20, well over a year ago, just a little email through Jesus and the director of the Realized Bradenton. And then last year, 8/26/20, so almost a year ago, there was a presentation of this, and it was stated that, from our director at the time, that this was a matter of presentation and that nothing was done and something would come back later with coordination with the CRA board. I checked that there has not been coordination with the CRA board about this, and now it's on the consent agenda, and I'm a little confused about, you know, I don't know if this falls under the arena of public art. I don't think that there has been, you know, proper approval of the rest of, you know, where these things are going, and I've got a few issues with it myself, so I'm moving to table this until we can get this straightened out.
Second.
There's no discussion on tabling motion.
Right.
So we can't even discuss it now.
Correct.
But we vote on that or not?
Yes, we do.
We vote, so, all right, so the motion to table, planning of new development. So start the vote in Ward 4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
No.
2.
No.
3.
Yes.
Okay. All right, table. All right, Mr. Sanders, E.
On our June 25 special meeting, I'd like to have the written minutes corrected. I would like the minutes of the June 25 special meeting corrected to reflect the inappropriate closure of the meeting before council could all be heard. Proper meeting protocol should always be instituted. So I'd like to have the record corrected, that it wasn't, everybody wasn't recognized for comments.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
When you have a special council meeting, including the emergency meetings that we have for hurricanes, you can only discuss what is on the agenda. You cannot discuss a non-agended item. It was my understanding, when we were there, you were going to bring up something that was not on the agenda.
Ms. Barnaby, can I address you? Because you brought up hiring somebody else that wasn't on the agenda and talked for probably 10, 15 minutes.
No, I brought up someone that had been interviewed.
But that's not on the agenda?
I brought up someone that had been interviewed, and we were...
It's not on the agenda, though.
Yes, it was. We're discussing these candidates.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Let's have some decorum here.
Yes, it was. We have a difference of opinion here, sir. I was discussing a candidate that we all interviewed.
All meetings should be conducted appropriately, and I believe that Robert's Rules of Order would override what you just said, but please, I'm not done, Mrs. Barnaby. And this is not the first time this has happened, and it's likely not the last time, and I'd like to have a stop put to it.
Well, Mr. Sanders, I would point out to you that while we do operate under Robert's Rules of Order, we also operate under the state of Florida, and I think if you check with our city attorney, he will tell you that should we have a special meeting called and we end up discussing something that is not on the agenda, that the public is not aware of, that we're discussing it, then we're all getting into trouble.
Well, you don't know what I was going to discuss, do you?
It wasn't on the agenda, was it?
No, was it a discussion or was it an item of concern that our city needed to know about? Well, you know...
It wasn't on the agenda, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, your comments weren't on the agenda either.
So we're going to, I'm going to stop this now. We're going to, if there's something that the council wants to vote on, make a motion and see if you get the carries, if there's going to be a change.
No, I want the minutes corrected.
There is nothing to correct in the minutes. The minute was adjourned after we did our...
Well, I'll make a motion that we correct the minutes in the June 25 meeting.
To...
To properly reflect that we didn't...
She wanted to break the law.
Ms. Barnaby, please. Ms. Barnaby, please.
Ms. Barnaby, I don't know what special interest you have in this, but...
My interest is protecting the citizens, sir.
Okay. Okay. My interest is that we have transparency and open government, and I don't think that what you're doing is that. These are council meetings, and I, and like you, should have a right to speak, and if I break the law, I have to live with it.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rudisell.
As far as amending the minutes, obviously, Mr. Sanders is welcome to perform a motion to amend the draft minutes, but we do need to have some detail as to what he wants in there, and then it will be up to the council as to whether they feel that accurately reflects what occurred at the meeting.
Okay. I had a comment at the end of the meeting and wasn't allowed to present it and was gabbled out, and then the meeting tried, it's on tape, the meeting tried to reopen, and we didn't reopen it. You know, you can go listen to it. It's just something that is not proper, and I just want it, and that's not the first time. So I want to make sure that when we close meetings, we close them with everybody's consent with, we really should have a motion to adjourn and a second, and any final comments, but we're not doing that, and I think that concerns me as a council person, that I'm not getting a fair say and being gabbled out before I do say it. I don't think we should run meetings that way.
And I'm going to make a comment to that, that I give every opportunity for every person to talk and to throw jabs at the end is not going to happen. As president of this council, I have the opportunity to adjourn a meeting at this right time.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't throw a jab.
Mr. Sanders, I'm talking right now. I'm talking. Let me finish. I let you finish. So at this point, you're saying that you were going to bring up something. What were you going to bring up? Bring it up now.
Bring it up that I got...
No, that what you wanted, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. You're right, go ahead.
It only works one way.
Go ahead.
So that's the problem we have.
No, it's not.
Right there's an exact demonstration of what's going on. This is not the first time you've done this. ABC News called me the night before and said that we had lost our public information officer, and they couldn't get... I thought that was important, whether you're breaking the law or not, I thought that was important for the council to hear this so we could respond to them, that they're not running around saying we lost a public information officer, but you didn't want to hear it. Now, you don't know what I was going to say.
You had said it before that, before the meeting.
No, I didn't.
You mentioned that was going to be said, so I knew what you were going to say, and I didn't think it was appropriate at a special meeting, and that was my desire at that time to say, get out of the meeting. If we needed to call, we could have Jeannie call ABC News and tell them that's not true. I don't think, they called you and told you that, or they texted you?
I think they texted.
Okay, so, I mean, it's a matter of saying, hey...
Well, matter of fact, I was at the awards banquet, and they texted, and then I stepped out and made a call, and I said, look, I'll look into it tomorrow. There's nobody available. And so I thought that was the first opportunity. It'll look, come on. When we get messages like that from news media, it's our obligation to answer them timely, because it looks bad on us. And so I don't, I'm not going to apologize for trying to inject that into a special meeting, and if I broke the law, so be it.
And I'm not going to apologize trying to protect the city as a whole.
But you did it.
But that happened. Yes, I did, because we reached out to them.
No, you allowed Ms. Barnaby to talk for minutes on trying to hire somebody else other than our administrator.
She made a comment that maybe this person would be good if there's other job opportunities.
That wasn't on the agenda.
So, Mr. Roff?
Yeah, I'll tell you what. I will second the motion, and I'll give an explanation of why. You know, that week, we'd gone through, never before had we put in that kind of time to get through a list of people, you know, to make a major decision. I know it was trying on everyone. I'd just gotten back from a trip and jumped right into this. It was, I don't think it was easy on anybody. It was a very big decision. It was very, I don't know how to say it, emotional? I don't know. But I didn't like the way the meeting ended, and it basically, and here's my point, it brought to point something that I didn't realize had been going on for literally the whole time I'd been in office, is that the previous, every meeting I've ever, and I've been asked to chair literally every meeting, Minnesota League of Cities, MPO, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, Sarasota Bay Estuary, we always follow the, is there a motion to adjourn, second, and vote? And, you know, I never really realized until that moment that we don't do that, and we should. So just for the simple sake of putting this to bed, I will second that, only to say that that should be, that that should be policy. Whether we need to continue with the vote right now, that's fine, or will Mr. Sanders accept that this should be a new policy?
Mr. Roff, if I'm not mistaken, what I remember in every meeting that I've done, I can't help what happened before me, but the meetings that I do, I say, is there any further comment for the good and all of that, and give people every opportunity to talk. I felt it important, that meeting, that we didn't need to get into something because Mr. Sanders had come in at the beginning of that meeting and told us what had happened. So we were in a special meeting.
I didn't say that.
And he'd said it when came in with Jeannie and said that you were doing, and I'm going to say something here, and that's what I heard him when he walked in that room. So that to me, it was about protecting us, and I don't want to get the city to look bad and do things, and that's my job as the president of this council.
And so what I remember happening at that meeting too, and it's just, I don't want to make a bigger deal out of this than it is, I know Mrs. Barnaby commented on something. I commented on something, so, I mean, it was, you know...
But that was in the context of what we were doing.
I think we're, so, but I do believe, though, that for the sake of continuity, for the sake of order, that even though you did that, you know...
No maliciousness of that.
Okay, but I think it would be proper, from this point forward, that we follow what everything, what I've done in every single meeting I've ever attended or ran, that there's a motion and a second to end the meeting.
Mr. Roff, the eight years that I've been here with you, eight and a half years now, you would have, you had a hard time every time something came up at a meeting that wasn't on the agenda. You did not like that. You told me that many times. You did not like things off agenda because it wasn't right for the public to be there to listen and do that, and that's been one of the things that I've tried to do. And again, I heard that from you for seven and a half years as a council person, that you didn't like that the mayor and the administrator and that were bringing up things to try to railroad it through. I would never do that. I haven't done that, and I'm trying to protect this council from that.
And I'm not saying it. So, and to be clear, when I said that was, and I was following from my training from the Florida League of Cities, if there is an issue, if there's an issue of major importance to the community and it's not on the agenda, I don't, you know, little things that come up are not, I've never made a big deal about a little thing not being on the agenda. If there's something like a contract or an expenditure or something that, you know, which popped up all the time, we're all aware, which popped up all the time out of the blue, so now we're going back into history. I'm moving forward on, you know, how we can do things better.
But that little agenda item to you might be a big item to someone else. So I agree with you from the standpoint, I have never tried to cut anybody off from talking in the context of protecting our city, and I will continue to feel that way.
Okay.
It's important to me to do that. And again, you and I've had a lot of conversations about respect in doing things, and I think I've always given it, and you've always given it to me, and I appreciate that. But I also think that we have to protect the integrity of what we do up here for the citizens, and that's important. Mr. Rudisell, did I do anything wrong by agending out of that meeting?
It is the mayor's prerogative to run the meeting and to adjourn the meeting. It doesn't require a vote of the council once the business of the council has been concluded. If I could bring this back to the motion and the vote that's before the council right now, there's been a motion and a second to amend, just to give our clerks some assistance. I'm not totally sure, but I'd like to propose or suggest some language just so everybody understands what's being voted on. Based on the discussion, it sounds like Councilman Sanders would like language added to say that Councilman Sanders attempted to make additional comments, and the mayor adjourned the meeting at 9:29. Is that accurate?
Right.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Further discussion. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, first off, Mr. Sanders says he doesn't care if he breaks the law, but I care because we all get sued, not just you. And so I think it's very appropriate to end a meeting before something gets done that we can all get sued for. I don't have a problem with amending it to say that you wanted to make additional comments that were not on the agenda, but to add anything that it was inappropriate, I don't agree with that, so.
Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Rudisell, could you please discuss when elected bodies have special-called meetings, not their regular meetings, the rules that we have to follow with that?
That's generally procedurally under Robert's Rules. When a special meeting is called, it's limited.
No, I'm talking about what the state says we have to do with regards to the agenda, sir.
Under the state statutes, if a meeting is properly noticed, the council can consider any items that may come before it.
Then why were we instructed for years that if we have a special meeting or an emergency meeting because of hurricanes, we were not to discuss anything else other than what was on the agenda?
Well, I think that's a procedural rule under Robert's Rules, that when a special meeting is called, you stick to the agenda that's before you. And it also goes to, while it may not be a legal issue technically, it does go to the public perception. When you put it out there that you're having a special meeting, the expectation is that those would be the items that you'd be taking up.
And with the situation that apparently Mr. Sanders was the only person on the council that was contacted by ABC News, I wasn't contacted, and I haven't heard anybody else say anything, why could he just not go to the mayor and say, I was made aware of this by a reporter? How is the city going to respond to it? It did not necessarily need council action at that point.
I wasn't asking for action. I was just making sure everyone was aware of what the media was saying so in case they got a question. I was actually giving you a heads-up, which I think is my responsibility, for what you might get as a phone call, and I'll continue to operate that way.
I would ask that you not do that with me, because if you bring...
Well, I'm going to do what I think is best for you.
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. If you are going to be bringing an issue forward or bringing something forward that you hear from a reporter that we could end up voting on, that's a sunshine violation, so please do not contact me.
I didn't contact you.
No, I'm just saying for all future endeavors, please don't do that with me.
I've never done that with you. I've never contacted you.
All right, and I was not intentionally trying to cut anyone off from the standpoint of you having your freedom to speak, and I've always given that, you always have your comments. At times, as the president of this council, I feel it's appropriate to protect the body here, and I will continue to do that, and I will not do it in any ways to give liability to this city if at all possible, and that's important to me, and I don't feel that there was anything done that day. It was just, because again, a comment could have been made when we were all in the room that this is what you heard, we would have reached out through our PIO to say she's still there, which I believe she had already done at that point, that she was going to reach out to either that morning or right away, and...
Because I discussed it with her.
Well, that's, and you discussed it in the room when I could hear you, so you came in that room and told her.
I discussed it with her before we got to the meeting.
But then you also said it when you came in the room. We were sitting there, I heard it, so I knew that you said you were going to say something. It didn't have to be on the record to say that if it was a pattern of saying it.
I don't think we need to make this for a long period of time.
So, all right, well, let's...
It's not proper to let people not speak, especially for elected officials.
And you've never been not elected or let.
Sorry?
Said you've never been not let to at times.
Yes, I have, multiple times.
And that's not true.
So I'd like for it to stop.
You say that, but it's never been, you've had plenty of opportunity in every meeting to speak, and if there's a fact...
No, I've been gabbled out several times.
Well, when it's the appropriate time to move on or say something, when you're saying something that's not true. Yes, as the president of this council, I have that authority, so. So, Ms. Coachman?
These are council meetings, I think.
Ms. Coachman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're spending a great deal of time on this, and we have more things on the agenda. At the risk of being booed, is this something that we could talk and discuss in a workshop?
We have a motion on the floor and a second. I'd like to call the vote.
All right.
I would prefer to discuss it at a workshop later.
No further discussion, please, Ms. Barnaby. All right, so to Mr. Sanders', motion is to amend the minutes to say he wasn't allowed to speak.
Is Mr. Rudisell's suggestion good enough?
Is that for Mr. Sanders?
Right. That seems, that seems a harmless amendment.
Yep, yep, I disagree with it, but, because I didn't not do it, but, Ms. Coachman?
I just wanted to say, I'm not saying a workshop to discuss this particular subject, but the procedural contents.
The procedure, okay. Okay, so, yeah, we can look forward on that, but we got your vote for this motion?
Could you read the amendment again?
Scott?
Could you read the amendment?
Oh, no, I gotta come up with it again?
Oh.
I'm hoping the Tamra has it.
Just, I haven't. Motion to amend special meeting minutes from June 25th regarding Councilman Sanders wanted to make additional comments, and mayor adjourned the meeting.
Harmless.
But I disagree with it, so, because I didn't do it personally, so.
I was just saying that he wanted to.
I called the vote.
Ms. Coachman?
Understanding that you, it was not personal, it wasn't malicious, but it did happen that way.
That's fine.
I, I mean, I'm just saying, it's what he experienced, what we saw, but it wasn't malicious, and it wasn't intentional in any way to, to disregard what he was saying. There was concern about what was being said not being appropriate, so. That just amends what happened, I don't know. I mean, do we need to also say it wasn't malicious?
No, we don't know what anybody's intent was.
Well, Ms. Coachman, it's yes or no. You have to vote yes or no on the motion.
Oh, yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
No.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. To business advertised petitions hearing, the communications, Mrs. Singer.
Good morning, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. The first item before you is the consolidated plan for CDBG funding running from 2021 to through 2025, also the 2021 through 2022 action plan. Ms. White is here to answer any questions and address any particular issues. It's my understanding that the general aspects of the annual plan have been vetted previous to this meeting, and if you have any questions, I would turn that over to Ms. White.
Questions by the council? This is the first reading. Do we need to have it read into the record?
I believe this is the only reading on this. It's not.
Oh, it's up top, I'm looking down, so it's the 20, okay, so, any questions on the CDBG council? All right, so we need a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, is this a public hearing item? Is this a required public hearing for this approval of the plan?
I believe so, yes.
It doesn't say so on the sheet.
It does not say that, but.
We've already had one. Oh, okay.
We've already had one.
We had the public hearing, okay.
Okay. All right, so then the chair will entertain a motion?
So is the motion that we approved the CDBG 2020, 2125 consolidated plan and the 202122 action plan, ordinance 3081?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'm, okay, second.
Now, is the ordinance 3081, that's not included in it?
That's, that's for the next item.
Yeah, that's the next item.
Okay, correction?
Deleting ordinance.
Deleting ordinance 3081.
All right, so Mr. Roth has a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
Carries 5 to 0. All right, Mrs. Singer for ordinance 3081 now?
Um, yes, do I need to read it into the record? This is your first reading.
Right. Tamra, do you want to read it for us? It's first for everything.
An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, providing for amendments to the city of Bradenton land use regulations, appendix A, floodplain management for the purpose of updating the city's floodplain management regulations, consistent with current regulatory guidelines, specifically amending Chapter 1, Section 102.3, basis for establishing floodhazard areas in Section 107.4, historic buildings, Chapter 2, definitions, Section 202 definitions, and Chapter 3, flood-resistant development, adding Section 301.2 detached accessory structures, and amending 304.4 elevation manufactured homes, deleting Section 3, providing administrative amendments to the Florida Building Code in its entirety, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, so we, what's the effective date that?
We're asking for a second reading and public hearing on July 28th.
Okay. All right, so, what is, any comments, Ms. Singer, on that?
Um, yes, this is required amendments to our floodplain management ordinance, and the building official is here for any specific questions you may have. Essentially, we have to do this prior to adoption of our new flood rate insurance maps coming online in August 10th, I believe it is, of this year. So we, we do have to finish this up and move forward so that it doesn't affect our CRS rating, our community rating, service rating. And what it does essentially, to put it in layman's terms, is it pretty much brings manufactured homes or mobile homes online, the same as any other home, so that if they replace the home, they have to replace it, replace it at the required minimum FEMA standards, and it includes an additional board foot, one additional foot of, of height. Currently, we have an exception for mobile homes, that it would just be three feet above grade, but that has to change basically as part of this. Any existing mobile homes are not affected unless they do repairs in excess of 50% of their assessed value.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you. I know it's just the first reading, but I, I think it's kind of important. I just wanted to make sure that this is not affecting the flood insurance rating negatively towards anyone. The only reason I brought this up is I'm, I just got my notice from my flood insurance, and it's going through the roof. I don't know how long I'm going to be able to afford it, but I do, we do get a credit. I know that the previous planning director worked hard to get us into a favorable arena for flood insurance. Are we going to be retaining that?
Yeah, the, the point to this is to retain the rating that we currently have.
That's what I'm.
So getting everything online by October, excuse me, by August 10th is the goal.
Excellent.
Ms. Coker?
Just the only question I had, the 50% rule, how do they figure that with the?
Uh, it's based on assessed value of the structure of the improvements, not like of the entire property. And in the community I worked for previously, you were able to go and get a private assessment. You didn't necessarily have to go with a property appraisers assessment on, and I don't know if the building official wants to come forward in case you have any more questions on that, but essentially, that's how it is.
It's just the structure.
Yeah.
That's going to be a lot of mobile homes.
Yeah. It's tougher to meet, but.
She is right. We will accept outside appraisals for the value of the property, and it does not include the land or accessory structures. It's just the structure involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Building Official, thank you for coming forward.
I'm sorry, Pat Wenzel.
Can you give me a ballpark figure of how many structures in the city are going to be affected by this?
I can tell you, I can tell you exactly every single one of them that are in the special floodplain hazard.
Okay, so we're talking probably Bradenton Trailer Park near the Ware Creek Cedar Hammock area.
Yes, ma'am, everything, everything that they bring for new, yeah.
Talking out east.
Yeah.
Okay.
Every one of them.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Wenzel? All right. All right, so we'll move this forward to second reading on July, in public hearing on July 28th, 2021. All right, thank you. Mr. Rudisell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 3082. This is an ordinance we have discussed a few times previously in different contexts. The purpose of the ordinance is to remove the Community Relations Board and Office provisions from the code that had been inactive for, for several years. The result is that the city will once again have a standalone Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And that, that's essentially the result, so.
Okay, so.
Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Do we want to have?
We need to read it into.
Tamra, Ms. Mountain, read it into the record? Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, repealing the Grants and Assistance Community Relations Board, GACRB, repealing the Community Relations Office, Community Relations Director, and Community Relations Board, amending provisions related to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, amending definitions and terms for consistency, confirming the current members of the GACRB as members of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Public hearing. All right, going to go ahead and open it up to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Glenn Jebelina for the record. Welcome to the club. So, this ordinance is long overdue. I mean, the Affordable Housing Board should have, should have been assessed as that on a standalone. You try, you guys tried to muddle the waters by putting in the Public Relations Board, adding additional responsibilities and stress to the already thin board that can't even get a quorum tomorrow. So this is a, this is a move in the right direction, but I will tell you, this board is pretty much governed by the administration, and, and that's not the way it's supposed to work. The board is supposed to make recommendations to this board via the administration. And that always, that hasn't, that hasn't happened. So really, that's, that's a slap in the face to the board members, which by the way, we're talking about a board, you know, I consider a good workday, eight to 10 hours a day. We met seven hours in the entire year. And when I tried to expand it to two hours, I got pushback. So that board, really with the administration directing the board, and we're just kind of signing off for it, you're getting rhinos. You're getting recognition in name only, and that's what you're doing. You're compromising that board instead of letting us to do, let us, let us do the work that we're supposed to do. So, you know, prop, you know, surplus property management, you know, I pointed this out before. In 13 years, you have not followed the statute, and I certainly hope the new administrator would, would take heed on this because this, this, these surplus properties should have came in front of our board. They did not. So that's a problem. So until, you know, at the county, we're on vice chair, we instruct the administration of what we want them to tell the board, and that's the way it should work. The county, I'm on the county. So those policies I tried to bring to this board, but got a lot of pushback because the administration just sets the agenda, the chair doesn't even set the agenda. They bring it to us and say, this is what we're going to talk about, this is what you're going to vote on, this is what we need to get the CBD money. That's, that's not a board. That's the tail wagon, the dog. So until you, until you straighten that hurdle out, and I hope with the new administrator, we would, that's the direction it needs to go. That being said, being just a common citizen again, since I've been not renewed, I'm going to give the pleasure to the board. I'll put in my application for the same position, since the for-profit builder is not currently, there wasn't, you know, if, if there were 10 people waiting in line, they could say, yeah, Glenn, take a pass, we're going to get somebody else. You have no one. You had no one filling my position, and that's why we don't have a quorum tomorrow. Thank you.
Ms. Jebelina? Ms. Jebelina? I just wanted to say that, you know, one comment you just made was that I hope moving forward, I, I'm hoping that there's going to be a lot of stuff moving forward that we can make corrections on. I mean, a comment earlier wasn't, wasn't aimed at this current mayor, but, you know, I certainly have had a difference of opinions on things that have happened in the past. I voiced my opinion.
Thank you.
Usually been at the losing end of a 3-2 vote, but, you know, I, I do good anyway. So there will be, and then I want to thank you for bringing something forward today that caught my attention. I didn't see that, I'll probably be commenting on that later.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Jebelina, I have a comment to you. I agree with most of what you say, and I'm on that board, and I've been on that board for a year, and we don't meet. And so it's, we need, as a council, we need to discuss how we appoint people, how we, what we expect of these boards, because I think they're, we're not getting the full bang for our buck out of that. And I, if we want to have a work session about something, how we appoint people to the boards and not, or remove people from boards should be more structured, so. As far as I'm concerned, we will bring this up again.
No board should go without a quorum. Mr. Jebelina, you and I met before, and I talked with you and told you some plans that we have, and as, as the way that things are set up to, to move forward, you know, I'm glad you gave your application, because I told you that that would be something that would be brought forward. This council, and when I was on this council, has been asked numerous times to bring people forward. It's been brought out to the citizens that we need volunteers, and there's not a lot of people beating down the doors to come on these boards. There's people that were, right now, and I got emails from people that we're going to be responding to, we've got their applications. One of the things that was important when this comes forward, that it will be to have the right people in the right seats, to make sure we are abiding by the law, so that's important to me. I will never do anything to try to set this council up to fail. That's important to me, and I, even if it comes up, a little bit of harsh feelings at times, and, and my letter has been changed right now. It was semantics with "we," so that will be corrected, because that's the job of the mayor, not always to, to do the popular thing at the time, but to make sure that we are moving this city forward, and I will always do that. So we're still in the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance 3082.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnaby.
Reading in the information that we received, where it talks about the numbers of members and types of members and quorum of members, do we need to have included in here the, the length of people's terms? Because these are not like Supreme Court lifetime appointments. They, as I understand it, they have terms. So my question is, do we need to include terms?
Mr. Rudisell, is that in there? I believe that was in there.
The, the terms are in there under the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The only reason you may not see them is because they're not being changed.
Oh, okay, thank you. This is, this is everything that was changed then.
Correct.
So just, again, the terms are, they tend to be, are they three-year or four-year terms? Again, I'm just questioning, because again, they are not lifetime appointments.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? We'll start the vote in Ward 2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to Mr. McCullough. Jim, I just wanted to say something before you get started. I know there's probably some people in the audience that might want to say something before we make a vote, and they, they will have that option once we get there, so don't worry about that if you're in the audience and you want to make a comment. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council. For the record, Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. The item before you is something we're very happy to finally get, come to fruition. We've been working on it for a while. In the, in the crowd, we have with us Tom Norton. He is with the Rotary playground, Playground Projects Incorporated. And we've been working with them on the idea of incorporating some new design into the improvements that are being proposed for Lewis Park. And I've just got a little bit of a presentation related to it. We've been working on trying to make some improvements at Lewis Park for quite a while, over a year and a half now. We've removed some equipment that's been in rough shape. Swing set out there was pretty rusted and dangerous, some other items have been removed. The existing bridges that cross the drainage swale that divides the park have been replaced, and those have been brought up to ADA standards as we did that, which is a theme that we'll get into here. We've put in some new split rail fencing along the edges of the park to help define the park and, and improve its appearance. And we've also restored, at the request in general of former Councilman Gallo, with his impetus to have us reinstate the, the ball field, so we have some clay ball field improvements as well. So just to give you an idea, here's some of the equipment that has been removed. This is the old swing set that was on, on the site. It was in pretty rough shape and needed to be replaced. These are the two new bridges that have been built and brought up to ADA standards to cross the, the drainage swale. The split rail fencing that we've installed really adds a nice touch, and this is something that we're adding at parks throughout the city as well to provide some uniformity to our appearances of our parks. And again, the clay ball field that has, has been well received by the community. There's some folks out there who are, are very pleased and have kind of taken ownership of it themselves and do some maintenance of their own because they have the background in that as well. So, in coupling with all of that, we had retained Kimley Horn back a year or so ago to help us develop a, a playground plan for improving what we had removed. Some of those equipment that had been rusted and whatnot that we have removed, we asked for a design to help enhance the park. And they created a couple of concept plans for us. We then had community meetings, or a community meeting at the park where we got some feedback from the citizens, who, this is a community park. And as part of that, we wanted to get their input on what some of these plans were. So you'll see in here that at the northern edge of this, there were, the, the right-of-way coming off of Riverview Boulevard comes up to this area, and there was, there's a cul-de-sac that's there. The original concept was going to be, we were going to have parking there. Feedback from the citizens said, absolutely, we do not want that, and that has been removed. So you'll see in my note here that this is now an outdated design concept. But again, what we were focusing on is replacement of the playground area that is within the fence that's out at Lewis Park at this point. And so that's the highlighted area at the middle bottom of the plan. They also had a separate plan for a different layout. Again, we got comment from the public, and as part of that, at, at that meeting that we had with the community, representatives from the Rotary were there as well to listen to what was going on. And the Rotary came to the city with a proposal to say, we would like to help participate in doing improvements at Lewis Park, with those improvements being aimed at providing an ADA compliant playground. In other words, to have all of the equipment associated with the playground be ADA accessible for all people. And what it offered us was an opportunity for them to provide funding for equipment because ADA compliant equipment costs more than standard playground equipment. And so, the agreement that they came forward with was the idea for them to provide funding for purchase and installation of equipment that would be ADA compliant in conjunction with what the city was already proposing to do. What that allowed us to do, again, their concept, as stated here, is to, to be all-inclusive, to allow all citizens to have the ability to enjoy the playgrounds, specifically designed to allow children of all ages to experience independence and self-direction in play. And it's, it's a pretty special thing that I'm, I'm happy to be able to present to you. So based upon that, the agreement lays out a, a joint sharing of the cost that the, essentially, the Rotary would be providing funding for the purchase and installation of equipment that would supplement what the city was already doing. So the city's doing the site work associated with it, the, the site furnishings, the site, the playground surfacing that would go under the new playground equipment. Because right now, Lewis Park has mulch and/or dirt underneath its playground equipment. We want to bring that up to our standards. Okay? So, that joint agreement is what you have before you. And based upon that, we coordinated with Kimley Horn to modify. And what this has allowed us to do is greatly expand the amount of playground equipment that we're able to incorporate into the revised park design, including both an area for two-to-five-year-olds and an age group for five-to-12-year-olds, as well as enhanced swings. There's what's called a liberty swing, which would allow individuals in wheelchairs to be able to have access and enjoy a swing. The blue line here is the drainage swale, I kind of put that on there to, to give you an idea. And what we've done with this is we've worked around the existing trees. There was some turmoil about the markings of the trees out there. Our intent here is that we're working within the beautiful shade that is provided by the natural canopy of the trees out there to allow this to occur. So just some renderings that we got from the Rotary of the different areas. This is for the two-to-five-year-olds, to give you an idea of what we envision the equipment will look like. Likewise, for the five-to-12-year-olds, the types of equipment that we envisioned here as well. And lastly, this is what's called a liberty swing. This is something that is being specifically incorporated into the design for the park. And again, bringing the joy of a swing to everybody. So with that, I would ask for approval of the agreement. And I'm, I'm sure folks have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Barnaby?
I would just like to thank Mr. McClellan, Kimley Horn, Mr. Norton, Rotary Club, and all of the citizens that have provided input to this program. Not, one of us is as smart as all of us, and I think that we're going to be very proud of what we're able to do in Lewis Park. And I hope that it is a partnership with the Rotary Club that they will continue to work with the city because we have more parks. And I would really, really love to see this kind of equipment spread throughout our city. When you say children of all ages, I remember my grandmother. She loved swings. She couldn't do it. She was in a wheelchair. She would love this.
And I think, Mrs. Barnaby, just to kind of piggyback off on that with the meeting we had, one, two of the things that, you know, were contentious at the meeting where there is not going to be any paving of the driveway there, which you've already said, and there will be no restrooms.
No restrooms.
So that's something that, you know, was never in the plan as far as restrooms, but you know, I guess years ago there was a talk about it, but, but that's something that, you know, some misinformation got out there. So we just want to make sure everybody here today, as well as listening, that, you know, those two things are not happening. And, and then again, there was at one point some, a tree survey done that made a lot of people nervous that, thinking that, because they saw a red dot or a red dot with a circle, that that tree was coming out. That was too, it was very important, I know to Mrs. Barnaby and this council, as well as the city, to keep all of the trees that we could. There's going to be a, a couple of the invasive-type trees that might have to go, but not just a couple. So just, and you won't even notice that. No oak trees or anything will be taken out. But it's, this park's going to be great, obviously. When, when I lived in Ward 2 for 30-plus years, and that was the park my kids grew up at, and I know we have other parks in the city that have some handicap accessible, you know, and probably our most famous Riverwalk Park. We've spent millions in Ward 4 over the years, and are spending millions right now. So I think it's important that we do as best as we can for all wards, not just, just one, so. And that's going to keep going forward as, hopefully, as we go forward, so. Do council have any other questions, or want to bring up any public comment before we make a motion? All right, yes. Yeah, no, citizen comment, so, anyone come forward, yes ma'am? Just please state your name and your address.
My name is Becca Haley, and this is Giovanni. And I live, I actually live in parish now. But most of, well, my entire life, until November of 2020, we both lived in Bradenton. We were both born and raised there, and I've been taking care of, you know, special needs kids, you know, for, you know, since I was 18 years, years old, and I just, this boy is about to turn 22, and he has never had a swing. He, there was one at Tom Bennett, but it, you know, he outgrew that, you know, second he hit puberty. So he's never had anything that he can do. And if you name the top five things that he loves in this life that bring him joy, at the top of the list would be a swing. You know, we've traveled all over, like, we've, we take road trips up to Ohio, to, to Ocean City, New Jersey, and we've seen, like, all kinds of swings. I've seen a special needs zip line, you know, we've done everything. But the one thing that I haven't seen anywhere in Florida or in any other state at any other playground is a swing that I can just roll him onto. And to me, like, I've, I've always just thrown him over my shoulder and, and placed him into a swing, buckled him up. I've had to rig it up before because some of them don't have straps. But to know that this boy will be able to swing for the rest of his life, like, I thank you all so much for that. Like, I can't, I can't thank you enough for that. And I did want to mention one thing about the, the, the parking lot. The, it not being paved isn't an issue. I did just want to mention though, that if you're putting, so two handicap spots, usually you have about two, especially a parking lot that size. But down the middle of it, if you have that paved or extend the sidewalk to that, I only say that because I have a van, it's not here today because the lift is broken, but it has a lift on it, and the lifts, the way that they work, there's these two mechanisms, and if it's not on even ground, the, the flap doesn't go down, so you basically have to, you have to do a wheelie onto it, which you can't do on uneven ground because the front wheels don't allow you to, to roll on its own like that. Usually, you have to do it backwards. Anyway, my, my point is the lift won't, the lifts won't work if there's not an even ground, which you don't need the whole parking lot to be, to be even or anything. You just need that one walkway in between the two handicap spots to be paved. Yep.
Thank you.
But yeah, and I just want to, again, thank you so much. You guys make this boy's dream come true.
Mr. Sanders has a question.
Ma'am, I, I, I'm very much supportive of this. And my wife was president of a JC organization in Des Moines, and they were, they put in a lot of these swings and raised funds for this, and it was very accepted. And so I've been doing this for 20 some odd, 30 years. And at her death, I set up a foundation to provide equipment for special needs kids. So you've got my heart on this, and I, no, I don't know if we have them in all parks or not, but we should. And if not, I think we need, I, I will advocate for, I know Kiwanis does a lot with children, and so if we don't have them, my goal would be to have them in every park in this city.
I agree.
So, they're, they're well-received, and there's nothing better you can do than that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a question, actually.
Yes ma'am.
Having just been over there with a stroller, I can, how do, I mean, is there, I mean, are we doing anything about all the roots? Because I know it was really difficult getting a stroller through there.
Well, the.
As I can only imagine.
The design of the park is including enhanced pathways.
Oh, sorry. Well, it's, it's probably difficult for you to see in the drawing, and again, I apologize. This is, this is the most recent version that, that was rushed to me so I could have something to present to you. The squiggly lines around the outside, those are pathways that will be constructed within the park. We also, even though the intent was not to pave the parking lot, we are enhancing it. It's, it's in need of love. The, the entryway, as you come off of First Avenue, our intent is to build a new concrete drive apron that would allow for you to be able to drive in and not spill your coffee on your lap. So, those are part of the, the concept. Yes, sir.
Jim, will you have any problem complying with the suggestion she made about the ADA parking?
Not at all.
That's what I thought.
I think I saw a comment.
Yep, still in that, okay. Mr., want to come forward, the back?
It is John Moody.
That's what I thought, so.
Yes, that's John Moody. The John Moody.
Recognize me now.
Please state your name.
John Moody, and we were not in town when the meeting was held out there, unfortunately. We were traveling. But as, when we returned, and we've lived a block away for 40 years and raised kids, and ran through Lewis Park this morning, Cheryl rode her bike through it, we, that park is the, it enhances the quality of life. You can't do, you can't find a park like that. Lakewood Ranch, I've designed a lot of parks out there. They're great, they're not Lewis Park. The swale that you refer to, like, that Jim refers to, I like to call it a creek. There are otters in there, there are owls that nest in those trees. The habitat extends right along our property, if you take the swale to the river, then that's where our house is. And the trees, it's like aviary. So I appreciate that you guys are listening to and, and understand the importance of this. When the tree survey was done, we had our grandchild here, and we were, took her over to the park, as we always do. And about five people, you know, came up, what is going on? What are all these marks on the trees? So, that's when I called, and we understood, you know, got an understanding that the trees are safe. But if there's some way that the, the citizens can be ongoing with this project and involved making this, you know, if, if there is a diseased tree, or, you know, that's something that doesn't quite fit the design and it needs to be modified, it would be nice if, you know, we could be involved and so that, you know, everybody's on the same page.
Yep, definitely, that's, the communication is, is very important, and that's what's, I know Jim's really working on and making sure we get everything out there. And talking about diseased trees, just to know, we know that that just happened to the city on night in front of our Public Works Building, the storm. The storm coming through that, but I'm just saying, so we know sometimes a tree looks great, but one storm or the middle of it's rotten, and sometimes that has to happen. But we've planted other trees there over the years, and we'll continue to do that. And you hate to lose those old trees, but sometimes it's out of our hands.
Well, and that's, you know, it's part of the history, and the other part of the history is some of the play equipment, which is not ADA accessible by today's standards, has a sense of history to it, that, you know, our kids, which are now in their 40s, played on it when they were little, and it still functions, and, you know, but maybe there's a way that you could have a historical. but maybe there's a way that you could have a historical little playground section, that, not, not ADA compliant, um, or maybe have an auction, and some of the residents could buy some of the pieces.
I like that idea.
Because, uh, we probably would buy one.
Where's the witch's hat, then? I want that.
A lot of those have been rusted through, and unfortunately, they took, when they took out anything, it was for safety.
Yeah.
Because they had corroded, or, when you have, my grandchild was, hand was in the pipe, all the way up in it, because he was playing on it, and, you know, it became more of a safety issue than, than that, so.
Yeah.
Understood.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There, there is no truth to the rumor that the orthopedist in town wanted us to keep the witch's hat.
Let Mr. Gallo speak, and then we'll come back. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Gene Gallo, tired, I mean, retired councilman, City of Bradenton. Uh, I want to thank you all very much for continuing the efforts that we started a number of years ago, Mary Ann and I. Mary Ann, the first time around, uh, for Lewis Park. Lewis Park, for me personally, has a lot of, uh, emotional ties to me. Uh, when my wife was a teenager, she lived across the street from, from that park, and, uh, we did a lot of swinging in the evenings in that park, in the swings. Want to, want to, want to clarify that. But I do have some questions, uh, after I, I tell you a few things. Both of my daughters had many birthday parties in that park, big birthday parties. Uh, both of my grandsons had birthday parties there, so it's been a tradition. Uh, there was a tree planted in, in my wife's name, and there's a, whatever you call it, not a headstone, but-
Historical, I mean, uh-
Memorial.
Memorial plaque, uh, with, with her information on it. Uh, and it's right near one of the drainage ditches. The tree that was planted, they planted three, and but the one where they put her memorial plaque, uh, is not growing, because it's higher than the ditch, and the water, all drains that went rain, strains down the ditch, so the, the tree's not getting any water. So you have my permission when you start redoing that park, if, and I'm sure there's some trees that are going to have to be removed to, to make way for other trees to grow, to, to move that one, if, if you'd like, because it's, that tree's not going to make it. But here's the big question, and it's a why. And I heard, uh, my good friend Mayor Brown say, there will be no bathrooms. May I ask why?
You might want to ask Ms. Barnaby that question.
Sir, at one point in time, many, many years ago, we did not have bathrooms in parks, and I remember, because right after the earth cooled, the dinosaurs died, I had a birthday party there, I had several there. Um, and we looked at putting bathrooms in. We now have bathrooms in certain parks that have a lot more people attending them than Lewis Park, and they are, they have become an issue. Part of it was the way they were designed, and part of it is the way that people choose to behave in public these days, when there's bathrooms around. Uh, so for a small neighborhood park, I personally think it would not be appropriate at this time.
Well, my concern, uh, again, is from past experience, when you have a rather large group of young kids, how many times you hear, mommy, I got a pee-pee, I got a pee-pee. Well, okay, go over behind the tree. And, and I think that the time has come that they shouldn't be doing that. Uh, I would like to see bathrooms there, and I know there, there is some concerns about them. My understanding that the, these bathrooms can be locked off premises by electronics, uh, where, where somebody cannot use it after certain hours. Uh, I know there's a maintenance problems, we would have to have somebody that would, would be cleaning, but I think that it would be important to have bathrooms for the kids, and as you fix this park up, believe me, you're going to get a lot of use and a lot, a lot of children in there, and I think that, uh, it would be a good idea to consider that. And, uh, I would like to say I would volunteer to go out there and clean them, but- At my age, I'm having trouble cleaning my own house, so. But thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. All right, anyone else follow up?
Just wanted to quickly go back to, like, the history of Lewis Park. I grew up there. I grew up in northwest Bradenton. So I actually, you know, I got to, I got to enjoy the witch's hat before they took it out. You know, I, I got to enjoy the, you know, I was at the age where, you know, the little kid playground, the two-to-five-year-old, you know, that was me. You know, and then I grew up, and then I remember, I went to Bright Horizons for daycare, and we used to go there all the time. We used to play baseball there. We used to go there on our, on our own when we got older. You know, like, I remember just, you know, a few years ago, my, my uncle actually works as a insurance agent just nearby, just around the corner, and, you know, while I was waiting for him for lunch, you know, I went there and I took a baseball bat, and I was just, you know, hitting balls. Like, it's, it's still enjoyable. But the reality is, is that the last time that I went there with Gio, I couldn't, you know, it was barely, you know, you have to go backwards over, over the, um, over the bridge, you know, now I don't have to do that. But, you know, and, and backwards through the, um, through the grass and stuff, and it, and it's hard when it's mostly, when it's more sand than it is grass. And it, I mean, it's hard anyway. The wheelchair itself weighs about eighty pounds, and then you add a hundred-pound boy to it. And I'm, I'm pulling a hundred-and-eighty pounds backwards through, through mud, dirt, and everything. So, I mean, it gets, it gets hard and stuff. But I, I just, I just want you guys to know, like, the history of Lewis Park will never die. Like, the, the fact that I get to finally enjoy it with my kid is amazing, but it's not forgotten, just so you guys know, but, yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak? All right, seeing none, um, any further comments, or we have a motion, Ms. Barnaby?
Um, I'll be happy to make the motion, uh, that we recommend, that, uh, the motion is to recommend approval of the agreement between the city and the Rotary Sun Coast Playground Projects Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just, just to clarify, this is a, this is an approval, so there's no recommendation. This, this is a final approval of the agreement.
Well-
Final approval.
I, I'm looking at the agenda item I see, which you're looking at.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and no further discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Five to zero. Thank you, and, and, uh-
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Norton. I know this came to the city, got the call probably six months ago, sometime in January, early February, and we appreciate everything that, the whole Rotary Club, I know this is a Manatee County Rotary Club, and what you've worked through, Mr. Norton, please take back to all of your people, and, uh, all of the hard work and timing, and we will keep working through this. So thank you to the Rotary Club for doing that, so, appreciate it.
And thank you all very much.
Yes, sir. All right, um, moving on to the next is setting of the tentative military rate and scheduling of the budget hearings. Obviously, we have to have this done by the end of this month, and, um, numbers are coming in still from the state. We've got some numbers that I think, uh, you know, at one point, they came in a couple days ago, that were like, whoa, good. And then all of a sudden, they corrected it the second day, which is still pretty good. So, um, you know, I mean, I, I would make a recommendation, and, and maybe Mr. Rudesell tell me if I need to do anything differently, but that we set the military rate at the same, knowing that we can lower it if we have to, if we want to, but we can't raise it, and I think the five-point-eight-nine-seven-six would be very appropriate to, to set as the same for now, and moving forward. Is there any comments, or, yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, um, yeah, I'm not sure if we need to do this today, but I, I'm certainly in agreement with you that, uh, you know, I like to, um, I, I like the budget, I think I'm pretty good at it. Um, I, uh, I'm not, uh, you know, enthusiastic about raising taxes, nor am I, uh, enthusiastic about giving up the rollback rate, so, uh, I think that the millage, from the calculations that I've looked at, I think that we can, uh, continue to maintain the current millage rate, that, uh, you know, uh, hopefully, property values will increase a little bit, and I just call that the cost of living adjustment. So, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm fine with recommending the, uh, that at this point, we can go ahead and keep the, the current millage rate intact. If we, if we want to lower it, we can. Um, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of raising taxes, I'll just let you know right now, so.
Mrs. Milton, do we have the dates, the scheduling of the meetings for, yet, or we would set that? We don't have the dates yet that we wanted to- To look at the other property appraisers, okay. Um, I mean, we don't have to do anything today, we could do it at our next meeting, and we'll have the date specific and all of that. But I just think that's something that, you know, if things stay where they're at, we're pretty good, so. All right, anything, other comments on that, or questions? All right, so, moving forward, any unfinished business? I don't see any. Council reports, we'll start in Ward Three.
Okay, um, well, actually, uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Jebelina brought up, um, I wanted to, uh, he brought the documents, and I wanted to look at that one that he had concerning charter, because actually, um, that touches on to something that I've been, uh, I was looking at what we've done since January, and, um, it, it's quite a bit. We hired a new planning director, we got the new CRA up and running, which, uh, you know, has, uh, uh, you know, had a lot of adjustments to be done. Um, we conducted administrator search, uh, and then we had to, uh, because of that, we were getting into org charts, and, um, uh, and then found out that our, uh, uh, you know, clerk and treasurer was leaving. Um, so anyway, um, but he did bring up something that I've been, since January, um, I was handed a document by the clerk, uh, at the beginning of the year, that I, I wasn't totally in agree, agreement with. Um, I was going to be bringing this up later, the time is coming up right now. Um, there has been, I know, the day after the election, I was told by the past administrator that, uh, the charter just changed. Uh, and I said, well, no, it didn't. The referendum did not change, and, and he was like in, in argumentative mode. And it's like, well, we'll deal with this later. Well, that, that time is coming up right now. Um, I know that there was a letter, I received a letter, we all received a letter from the city attorney. Um, God, it's probably been about six weeks ago, maybe seven. Um, I was upset with that letter, and the statements made in it. Um, I'll be dealing with that, and then, um, anyway, this is, you know, we spent a lot of time, uh, dealing with the city charter last year. Uh, the meetings were not civil. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I fear that in an attempt to fix the charter, it may have gotten worse, so. I'm just, uh, making a, a note, noticed right now that, um, this is, this is now next on my agenda item.
Anything else?
No.
All right, Mr. Sanders?
Now that you brought that up, I'll finish my thoughts on that. I'm, I'm in agreement with you a hundred, one hundred percent. We've made it worse, not better. The charter is a hundred-and-twenty years old. It's, it's not, not what the citizens want. It was narrowly defeated by five-hundred votes out of twenty-two or three thousand. So I don't think it's, uh, anybody's got bragging rights one way or the other. To me, it's a fifty-fifty split, and needs to be revisited professionally, uh, between now and the next election. So we have to have it reviewed before next August, and I, I'm going to advocate for doing that. The, Mr. Jebelina, the, the document you presented was, uh, the referendum three of the, um, that was voted no, and basically what it says is that, do you want to remove the police powers from the office of the mayor, and the public said no. And, but part of that, it said, but he retain, he or she retain the ability to run meetings, uh, point boards, uh, veto. And that's just by memory. Um, so they also voted no for that. So we're operating not by the referendum that was voted by the public, and to me, it needs to be investigated as to, uh, how we're going to handle this, because we can't put out a referendum and not comply with it. Would that be a true statement, Mr. Rudesell?
The referendum was asking the electorate to approve a proposed change to the charter, and that is what was defeated. So the-
That's right.
Language that you're, that you're referencing is related to powers of the mayor that were proposed to remain, regardless of whether the referendum was approved or not.
Absolutely, and let me, let me read the, the referendum. Uh, it says, "The city charter amendment revised the powers of the office of the mayor. Shall the Bradenton City Charter be amended to revise the powers of the office of the mayor to remove the office's general, executive, and supervisory powers, the power to sup, appoint, terminate, and direct the police chief, and the power to, uh, certain temporary vacancies, but retain," and there's where the, the rub is, "but retain the powers to preside at council meetings, break ties in council votes, appoint committees, and veto ordinances." So the public said no. So they said no, you still in control of the police department. But it says, no, you're not in control of the last two lines. That's exactly what it says. I mean, here it is, if you want to read it.
No, I, I'm familiar with it.
I know you're familiar with it, because you wrote it. You and another law firm wrote it, so it's, I've always had an issue with it, and we tried to separate those questions, so it wouldn't be, so you voted no, you can keep the power of the police force under you, but you lost your power for the rest of it. And that's what Mr. Jebelina is saying, and that's, I don't know how else you would interpret it.
First of all, I, we did have an outside consultant working on that language. The language was approved by this council before it went on to the ballot. That language, like I said, is explaining what would occur if the referendum were approved, that in that scenario, these powers of the mayor would be removed, but these powers would remain.
That, that was the intent behind it, I understand it. I, I'm very familiar with it, and I questioned that to begin with, and said, no, I think they need to be separate questions, because if you vote yes on it, uh, you lose the power of the, the, the major issue was the, the police powers, uh, who, who is in charge. And so if you lose that power, you would still be mayor and retain all the other powers. That was the, the, the whole purpose of the, but we threw that in there, and, and I tell you, I, I was not happy that we did that, but in order to move the ball forward, I allowed it to go through without too much controversy, and now, it's, it's an item. It, it, and it needs to be investigated, or, uh, having a, a outside opinion by Attorney General, to, uh, I mean, we put a referendum, and the public said no. So read, it, it's really that, not that hard. And, and, and I'm, I'm going to be investigating this and ask, uh, outside counsel or the Attorney General to, um, give an opinion on this. We talked about, that was the bad part, here's the good part. Uh, we talked about, this, I'm always a proponent of, of city parks for children, and adults. I like them too. Uh, and we don't have a park board, or a park director. And I'm, I'm going to be advocating or recommending a, uh, park board, maybe a public park board, to satisfy the needs of, of the people that, because we, we perceive a living example here today, that, that it's, there's a need, and I, I, you know, when I first ran for office, I said, we, we're not doing the best job we can in our city parks. Well, we're doing a pretty good job now, because we spent millions of dollars on, on the, my ward, uh, park. But it's not all about that, you know, the playground equipment is important too, but other parks, you, everybody can't go to one park. So we've got one, two, three, four, five parks, and I know there's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that's set aside for, uh, a couple parks in your area, so- area, so Ms. Barnaby's area is now getting that done, and then the Riverwalk is, will be completed. So, I, I think we're having a pretty massive responsibility for somebody to be in charge of that, not just to fall under the public works. Many cities have park directors, or, and I'm going to recommend that we, we look into that. The same, same being said, I'm going to recommend that we look into a director for human resources, we haven't had one, and I think there's, it's lacking there, so, that's my comments.
Mr. Roth, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see the, any harm, and, I mean, I'm not sure if there were, like, I know that a lot of cities have parks and recreation department, I don't know whether that usually falls under planning, or, or public works. We may, I know that we have our own equivalency of that, and we could possibly do that, I was just going to say, when you mentioned another board, as was stated earlier today, we have a hard time filling boards, that I think that, you know, at this point, we're running out of land. I don't see us, you know, creating too many new parks, I know that, I mean, I had an opportunity to do one through a foreclosure from the Great Recession, but that's not going to happen again. So, that, so, anyway, I would just say, I'm not, and then we have a brand-new city administrator here, coming from a different arena, a larger city, I'd like to hear his thoughts on this, that I'm all for, you know, trying to figure out ways of improving our operation, and this by no means should be interpreted that I'm criticizing Jim and his department, because I think they do a fantastic job with what they're doing. But I just don't know where, where to go on, on that next, so I'll be relying on the professional that we just hired.
I agree, Mr. Roth, and there was no intent to slight you, but, you know, our parks are getting, you know, we've out about three miles now, or will have, of Riverwalk, and that's, that's a pretty good-sized area, and it takes a lot of time. A lot of your reports are coming right directly associated with, with the maintenance and care of that park, and now, we're improving all the parks, I just think we need to discuss it further, and, and, you know, you can't go wrong by having good parks.
And I agree with you, Mr. Sanders, on that, as well as, you know, some of the things with the org chart, obviously, we brought in Mr. Perry to work on that. One thing that we do have to remember, and this is going to be something that we're going to be discussing, budget as we go forward, a lot of things can be done, but, how are you going to pay for them? And that's one of the things, we have to make sure that our citizens understand, that, you know, we want to do this, and I've been somebody for eight and a half years now talking about how our city looks, so, you know, that's important, and it's also the prudent to make sure we're able to, to pay for it in a way that doesn't put it more on the backs of our citizens. And that's why I think the agreement that we're doing in Lewis Park is, we're getting a spectacular park, and we almost, and I said it, and it really wasn't what Jim thought at the moment, I don't think, but, you know, we basically got a 50/50 matching grant. And anytime we can do that, whether it's through Rotary, Kiwanis, or any group that wants to give out there, you know, if you're going to give us a lot of money, we'll try to figure out how to match it, and then figure out how to maintain it, is, is that important too.
I agree on the money, because I, you know, I'm the finance guy, and, and we just approved $150,000 through the CRA for parks in Ward Five. And now, Lewis Park is, is, we just approved that, that's good, and we've already approved the $7 million in Ward Four, my ward, for the extension of the Riverwalk. So, there is probably not going to be much request for money future forward, it's, it's already appropriated, it's there, I agree with you, I mean, and, and we spent $600,000 on cameras, which is good, and the police department loves it, we spent a million dollars on body cameras for the police department, I hope they love it, I think it's a very good thing. Matter of fact, we were the first, I was at a meeting, the mayor was there, and our chief was there, and we were the first public safety police department to, police department in the county to have body cameras. Is that true?
I don't, I don't think so. I think Manatee Sheriff's Office, we all got together as chiefs and sheriffs, and decided together, we were going to go towards it, so we never like to say who's first or who's last. I think we all decided together, we were going to get them, I'm not sure, weeks or months, or whatever, so I'll say, I'll defer and say, I think we all kind of embarked on that together.
We tied.
Let's say, that's a great one, we tied.
I think we actually came out of the, I think we were across the finish line before they did, probably because of size, but I'm going to take credit that we were, we were first, because at the meeting, you know, they came in afterwards, and now Palmetto, so, either way, we did the right thing, and, so.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Sanders?
No.
All right, thank you, Ms. Coachman?
Yes, thank you. First out, I'll just kind of piggyback on what has been said about the playgrounds. Yes, there are, there's some money earmarked to do a great deal of work and improvements on parks in the Ward Five area, and I'm just extending an invitation to any other entities that would like to match that money. We're okay with that, but it's exciting, very exciting, to, to hear of the improvements and, that are forthcoming in Lewis Park, and are, all of our parks. I don't know if this is a fortunate thing, or unfortunate, but I, this week, as many other weeks, has had the opportunity to see our finest first responders in action, and I just want to say, thank you, thank you, job well done. I can't, I can't even say how quickly response is, and I got, anyway, just thank you. Lighting, street lighting, just some comments. Few people have been visiting my area from out of the city, out of state, and even out of the country, and they love the friendly city, but they say we're all so dark. So, just shedding, you know, sharing that. There's a church, and we, we talked briefly, they're interested in purchasing property, so, that's just something, and I'm mentioning this because that's something that'll be coming forward, possibly CRA, though. And lastly, welcome, welcome, Mr. Perry, we're excited, we're, we're expecting great things, a lot of pressure, well, no pressure, try not to put any pressure on it. Yes, pressure. But, welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilwoman, Coachman, appreciate it. Look forward to working with everybody.
And I have a comment that, Mr. Perry, you never got back with me, and what color you wanted your office, so I painted it hot pink.
I love it. Put some green in there, too.
I think it had to be official government white, and I thought that was the kind of standard.
No, we're, we're, we're.
Coachman, anything else?
That's an extra paint left.
All right. Ms. Coker?
Okay, just a couple of things. I've been getting a lot of communications from our residents about the recycling program, and I am no way disparaging our public works, I know this is an unprecedented situation, but I do, I would like to see, I'd like to comment to the public, I think it would lessen your anxiety quite a bit if you would sign up for our code RED, because you'll be more informed, and there won't be so many blue cans that are out there. I know that our public works is working very hard to work through this special time, but if you would sign up at thecityofbraden.com in the code RED, it would, I think it would go a long way. I also would like to, again, welcome our new administrator, very excited about him coming on board, and I would like to congratulate one of our, one of our community members, Leah Roddenberry, I don't know, a lot of you may know her, she just was crowned Miss Florida, and she's going to be, she's going to be representing for us at the Miss America Pageant, and this is actually going to be the 100th anniversary for Miss America. She's a very beautiful person inside and out, if you don't know her, and so, she's worked very hard, and sacrificed a lot, she just graduated from the University of Florida, but we'll forgive her for that. She's a beautiful young woman, she's put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears for this, and so I hope we'll all support her in, as she goes to represent the Sunshine State at Miss America. So, if you know Leah, give her a nice pat on the back and thank her. I also had an opportunity yesterday at the Kiwanis to hear Dell Couch, I don't know if you're familiar with his music foundation, but he is helping a lot of the young, talented artists here in the community, and he brought a young artist named Bella Garland, write, write her name down, you're going to know her. She just competed, she's a singer and a songwriter, and she performed for us two songs, I was in tears. But she has, she has been awarded an opportunity to go and perform at the Bluebird Cafe in Nashville, and there's some significant, if she wins that, that competition, she, she will, she wins some things, but also, she's about to put out a new extended play, another one of our good local youth that is going forward, and I want to give a big shout-out to Dell Couch Music Foundation, because they really are helping a lot of the young artists, and so, I would strongly recommend. And then, also, the Manatee Performing Arts, they are, they've got tickets for sale, they're finishing up their children's summer camps, and the performances will be Friday, starting Friday, July 16th at 7:00, tickets are available at their website, manateeperformingartscenter.com. And so, that's all for my report, except I did see someone from our area that I think wanted to talk about solid waste, I don't know when it's appropriate.
Okay, there was no card or anything?
I'm not sure.
All right, we'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, some of you might remember that back in the day, I was a Lamaze instructor, and it's very exciting to think that one of my Lamaze babies is going to be in the Miss America contest. That also means how old I am. So, I just wanted to, to give a shout-out to Leah, she, she's such a lovely young lady, such a lovely young lady. I wanted to thank our police, our fire, our public works, and this body, because we're the ones that pay for these things. I had many, many compliments dealing with the Fourth of July. I had people call me to tell me how much they loved the fireworks show, they thought it was one of the best ones that we'd ever done. I had emails from people thanking me for the police and fire, and, and how they were participating in certain neighborhoods that tend to have people come to be able to see the fireworks, and, again, there's a couple of bad apples every once in a while that show up, and, and our two departments handled it correctly, and everyone had a wonderful time, and they were very appreciative of the work that was done by our fire and our police department, so thank you very much. Mr. Perry, I don't, welcome, but I also have a date on my calendar for September 5th, because Notre Dame will be coming into Doak Campbell Stadium at Bobby Bowden Field. Mr. Perry is, is a proud alum and current, yeah, he's part of the Fighting Irish, so he might not want hot pink, he might want, like, the navy and gold.
Blue and gold.
Maybe that could be part of a bet, garnet and gold versus navy and gold, I don't know.
Royal angel, some sort of, well-spirited competition.
So, I, welcome, sir. We are the friendly city, some of us were born and raised here, and my comment to that is, we, some of us didn't have enough imagination, education, or money to move away, but welcome to, to our hometown, and we hope that, that your time here is well-spent, and that you enjoy all that our community has to offer, sir. So, thank you. Mr. McClellan, following up with what Mrs. Coker brought up about the recycling issue, can you share with us so that we get the information out as to why we're having such difficulty right now, please?
Well, as I had indicated to you, I think at the last meeting, prior to us having to do any suspension of recycle, we are in a driver crunch. Our CDL drivers is required to have a CDL to drive a solid waste truck, and the current environment we're living in, it's become, we've become an employment agency for some of our competition. For instance, I think I shared with some information with Ms. Coker last night, Waste Management has pilfered away few of our drivers with a program where they're offering a $3,000 retention bonus. Basically, if you stay with them for three months, you get $1,000, if you stay with them for six months, you get another thousand, if you stay with them for a full year, you get another thousand. We've had some people leave, and we've had some people leave and call us back saying, "Hmm, the grass isn't quite so green, because my, my insurance is way more, and I'm, I'm really not making any more money." It's unfortunate, and so, we have been dealing with that, we've had a couple of hires this week, we've had an internal employee who passed their CDL through our program that we entice, so, we are on the verge of re-establishing recycle on Monday, back to our normal schedule. I had initially thought with my folks that we could try to pull off something this week on a one-day thing, unfortunately, to do so would have created more chaos in terms of misunderstanding for, for the citizens, so, I chose to make the decision to say, "Let's just wait and start when we're ready to be doing so on a normal basis on Monday." So, starting Monday, recycle will be back to its normal cycle, so that anybody whose normal day of recycle is Monday will be collected on Monday, and the rest of the week in that normal fashion.
Thank you.
We also, currently, occurring at Public Works is a focused job fair, specifically aimed at CDL drivers, that greatly appreciate all the help from our HR folks to help put that together. Basically, we have people on-site to help expedite the process, in other words, ordinarily, somebody would come in, and they, we, they would be interviewed by our staff, and then it would go through a process where we'd go through a background check, and have drug testing, all of that's occurring on-site today at Public Works to help expedite that process, to speed it along as much as we can.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring to the council's attention, I'll be happy to make copies of the article, the Florida Trend Magazine this month is talking about recycling, and how now that China is not buying as much of the recycles as they did in the past, that some communities are finding it's costing them more money to do recycling, they're not, everyone thinks that you make money off of your recycling, that's not happening anymore. So, it's going to be important, when we're going through the budget cycle, to hear from citizens, if recycling is something that they believe is important, it may cost the city more money to do it, and we may need to make some adjustments with that. And this article spells out a lot of the problems that cities are having with recycling. So, I, I'll be happy to ask Ms. Melton if she will make copies of this article, so that everyone gets a copy of it. One other thing, Mr. Mayor, previously, I had mentioned in the council meeting about a gentleman, Mr. Albert Few, who was turning 100 on June the 9th, and we were all encouraged to send birthday cards to him. I do, it has been reported, it was in the newspaper, that Mr. Few did pass June 29th, but he was an amazing gentleman, and I think that notice should be paid when we lose someone out of our community that graduated from Bradenton High, served in the military, was truly a rocket scientist, and came back to Bradenton and participated in the community for as long as, as he was able to. So, Godspeed, Mr. Few.
Patrick?
Yeah, getting back to recycling, Jim, you know, I-
Yeah, getting back to recycling. Jim, you and I had a discussion in the hallway about, you know, your potential, your job fair and incentive programs. First off, is there, you know, several questions here. Do you need any budget adjustments to try to, you know, recruit? Is there, have we thought of any way of an incentive program? I do know, so, actually, I was trying to recruit workers for you at last, when I'm out running around talking to people and I think they have, you know, potential, or maybe a kid or a nephew or something like that, I'm trying to find you drivers.
Thank you.
I've heard Mr. Gallo's available, too. He told me today, so.
Does he still have his CDL?
Yeah. And then also, you know, the recycling, I explained to my wife constantly, and I'll probably be doing it again, that we don't, you know, we don't make money on recycling. And the problem is, we're sticking so much stuff in the cans, and it's got to be separated that we're literally, we're spending more money to get rid of recycling than we are the trash itself.
Well, basically, the tipping charge for recycle is approximately twice what it is for conventional waste going to the landfill. And that is the fee that we pay to the recycling facility down near the airport that's run by Waste Management. And, you know, they have a process by which, you know, they take in the material, and there's an automated system set up to separate the waste as they come in. I can tell you that they are having trouble getting rid of material. They've called and said, can you slow down recycle? Like, nope, sorry. That's, you know, that's not, we have a contract. It's coming your way.
And how much of their separated material actually goes to the landfill?
That I can't, I can't tell you. But basically, if
A good portion.
If a load comes in that they deem is, I think 20% is the cutoff. If it's contaminated with more than 20% with garbage, the entire load is sent off to the landfill, and we're charged for that. Okay? But at the same time, they may, they may take the material and send it to the landfill anyways at their own cost, just to get rid of it. That's on them. That's their call.
Correct. So, so, an educational program about what's really, the concept that everyone that we're saving the planet by doing this is not necessarily true. We're doing the best we can, but we could probably do it better if we were, if we could get everyone to recycle what should be recycled and not throw the rest of the garbage in there, the program would actually run better, would it not?
Yes. And, you know, unfortunately, I think recycling as a whole is a victim of its own success. Because the more you recycle, the more you saturate the recycle reuse market, if you will. And that has caused a collapse in some of the pricing.
Right.
Where are we at on the performance bonuses for your department? And Chief can address it when her turn comes up also. Have we just put that on hold for a little bit as an incentive for retention in your?
I was unaware that we were considering anything. I knew that we had talked about the premium pay as it associated with COVID.
Right.
If that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. I'm waiting on direction from council. I'll pull the trigger tomorrow if you tell me it's okay to do.
I figured that. But I, we were kind of slowing it down a little bit, probably because our new administrator.
No, understood.
So, so I see smiling faces over. That's what I like. You know, we, I think we basically, I don't know if we actually voted on it or not, but we certainly said that that's what we intend to do.
I think
And it was one of the first priorities.
I think the main delay that I recall was associated with making sure that whatever we do with the ARPA money is dealt with in a proper way from a reporting standpoint.
Right.
That's, that's the last I was aware of. As far as establishing who gets what and where, we can do that drop of a hat. You tell me, and we'll go.
And I know one of the things I've been talking, and Tom in Finance had sent me an email yesterday, that the rules keep changing. So we've got to make sure that some of the rules are right. And that's why with the county, when we had the council of governments, they talked about the Ernst &amp; Young being involved in that to make sure that we don't do something and then have to claw it back. So I think it's important, once Mr. Perry gets on, then maybe we could talk with Karen Stewart at the county, see the Ernst &amp; Young. And I know this council, I believe we talked about the possibly going with that at one point. But we just don't want to do anything that's going to then have to claw back money and cost us. That's very important. So in the federal government, I think every other day, you get some guidance on what the new rules are. And if we'd have done the one way, we might not have been inside those rules. So Mr. Perry's got a lot to do when he comes on board. So I wanted, I wanted to do is, we're talking about the recycle. And if there's somebody that wants to speak to the recycling part of things in the audience, is any citizen comment on the recycling? Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, council. My name is Andrew Schroeder, president of Artists Guild of Manatee. Mr. Rob actually spoke my concern, so I'm going to keep this quite concise. I called in asking about the recycling program last week, and the gentleman I spoke to on the phone said it was a scam and a waste of time. Said it's all going to landfill anyways. So that was quite discouraging, and I'll just retire the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you.
Sir, we've heard that before. But it's, it's, there's advocates out there for save the earth that will come unglued if you say that. But with all probability, there is a lot of it going to the
But that was not a good statement.
Right. I'm glad you said it, so I didn't have to.
Glenn Gibellino for the record. You're exactly right. It takes a lot of education on recycling. And it's a school of hard knocks. I mean, you can't even throw a pizza box in there with a little piece of crust on it. They're very, very particular. And, you know, if we're up to me, we just should do recycle Amazon boxes because everybody's getting them. And, you know, they would, they'd be filled with nice clean cardboard, and it'd be a done deal. The other concern that I was surprised to hear that, we get charged at a higher rate for recycled, correct? But if the recycle place wants to dig that to the landfill as garbage, they get a cheaper rate. Is that correct? So they would keep the difference. Am I, am I understanding that properly?
No.
So, so we bring a truck load and say it's 200 bucks, and, but they can dump it for 100. And if there's more than 20%, they still charge the city 200, but they take it to landfill at 100. Am I not understanding that properly?
Well, the number's beside the point.
Okay.
Basically, it's about $80 a ton for us to take material to the recycle facility. If they deem that the load is contaminated and send it to the landfill, we're charged the additional $40 for it to go to the landfill.
Got it.
On top of the $80 that we spend.
Yeah. I think, you know, recycling is a tremendous amount of education. I just don't see it being profitable. And if people are willing to step up to the plate, that's fine. But it's a difficult task. I've been at that plant. I've spent the day there, so.
It's worth a trip for anybody who wants to
I've been there.
What hell it looks like.
Exactly. Yeah. Bring your close pen for your nose.
And I think that's going to be important as we go forward. Jim will come up with maybe a plan. And obviously, working through with Rob, working through some of the logistics of how we can better serve our citizens. And again, we've talked about a lot of things today that all of us want. But what we have to really think about is, how do we make it operational and financially feasible? Because we can do a lot of things if we double our millage. But that's not going to happen, and that's not what we want to do. So we have to figure out strategically how we're going to do things. And I think that's very important. Couple other things that I have, obviously, boards. I don't know if you want to take this from me or not, but I challenge all of you to get me two or three board members that we can appoint to things. And that's been something I've heard for the last eight and a half years. It's hard. It's hard. It's hard. And if you're out there listening and you want to be involved on a board, we want you. So if the council people can send me, you're only allowed two boards, Mr. Gallo. You're already on two boards, so no more. But no, it's, that's something that is something that I heard from the previous mayor for eight years. And now I'm saying it. So it's hard. It's not an easy thing to do.
We shouldn't be creating boards.
No, it's gonna be hard. I agree with Mrs. Barnaby. On the Fourth of July, I've heard a lot. And that's, that's a, in conjunction with our city, City of Palmetto, and the county, we all split it three ways. Palmetto organizes it, and it was probably one of the best shows. Obviously, with COVID last year, we missed it. So people were excited. And, you know, everyone that was involved did a great job with our police, fire, and Public Works, obviously, the cleanup. The org chart is something we talked a lot about. There's different ways. You know my opinion on it. I brought it up, you know, and it got blamed on the previous administrator, but it was me asking him to bring it up. That's something Mr. Perry, I hope, will get in pretty quickly and see how we can improve that, make things better, as well as, you know, making our city operations smoother and going through things. Obviously, through Elsa, we had a, kind of our own EOC meeting with the team here in the city, Police, Fire, Public Works, all departments, planning, clerk and treasurer's area, everyone else that was involved. We had about 45 people in a room. I was very impressed with our staff, the way we went through things. We were prepared. We were lucky, you know. And so that sets us up for the next one. The only thing, we weren't lucky, and you didn't bring up about the tree, Jim. So we did lose probably a 100-plus-year-old tree, I would think, the way, the size of it. Unfortunately, that's just the health of the tree. You know, it was rotten in the middle, and, you know, that was the only thing that we've seen big in our city. But, you know, we'll have to plant another one and hopefully get it growing again, and don't worry about it. Obviously, Mr. Perry coming on board is very exciting. A lot of challenges. He's made a lot of notes over there today, and, you know, he's got a lot to do to keep going. So we're excited about him being here. And then one of the things that I'll say, and if you know me in this community, and I'll say it again, I'm fifth generation. My grandchildren are seventh generation. There will always be working towards the truth. And if I can do anything to make sure we tell the truth and continue to work for the good of the citizens, that's important to me. And I will never disrespect anybody, but I won't be disrespected or disrespect any citizens. And the citizens also, you know, need to understand, our staff works as hard as they can. And sometimes, we make mistakes, but we will work forward with that, and we'll take it. But, but it'll always be about doing what's right and making sure that as long as I'm the leader of this, president of this council, we will work for the good of the people and for the whole. And if you question me, call me. Because I'm very accessible, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And if something is going to change, I'll call you and talk to you. And I have done that so far. And you may not agree with me, but I'm going to work for the good of the whole. So that's important to me. And I'm looking forward to our meeting next, next two weeks from now to kind of get things going and having Rob on board with that. So, thank you. Department heads, starting with Tamra.
Yes, sir.
Nothing to report today. So, all right. Robin?
We are, we have added a code enforcement officer, which came to us from the police department. I want to make sure I have the name correct here. It is Harold Munahan, who's been parking enforcement with the police department for some time now. So we're very glad to have him on board. This makes our code enforcement fully staff. So we're going to start to work on some of the programs we've discussed previously in terms of education and enforcement and moving forward on that. And with that, welcome to the new city administrator, and we look forward to working with him as well.
I have a question for you, and I think we need to publicly tell people that any, I think July 1, that we cannot, if you're, you're going to make a complaint to the city about code enforcement, you have to give your name and address.
Yes.
By state statute.
By state statute.
By state statute. Yeah. There was a number, a number of recent results from the legislature this season. And that's one of them, that we are prohibited from accepting anonymous complaints on code enforcement.
So you're probably going to get a lot of angry people that, I'm not giving my name. Like, you know, okay, then fine, then call your congressman, you know, right?
Yeah.
Don't call the mayor on that one.
Well, we'll find, yeah. And we'll find a way to work with people.
Yeah, I understand. But I thought it should be publicly said here at this meeting.
Yeah.
And it says unless you're fearing for your safety or life.
Correct. Yes.
There may be ways, people, if there's something that's happened or they've been threatened, you know, I mean, that's going to be hard to prove.
Yeah.
It's going to be a tough situation. So, thank you. All right. Thank you. Chief?
Nothing really to pass on, other than I'm going to be out of, out of, out of town first of the week. I'll be up at a chief's conference up in Tallahassee. So I can still be, yeah, I know it's gonna hurt.
Good place.
You can reach me by phone.
Chief, I've got a couple of comments from the public about the new fire station.
Yep.
And they were complaining that it was, looked abandoned. And you have any comments on that?
And that's, that's what we've been talking about. It's been a struggle to get people working there, to keep them there. A lot of the holdup right now is material, is trying to get metals and different materials. I know the roof, a lot of that's been backordered, put on hold. So they're kind of working on the inside the best they can, whatever they can. But it's coming along. But it's a turtle pace. I mean, it's slow go.
Is there any overgrowth or anything in the parking lot or anything that we can look into? Because their comments to me was, I haven't even driven by them, but is that that it's, it looks like an abandoned facility?
I believe there's a big mound out front. Is there anything we can do to get that cleared up?
Yeah. We can check into that. I mean, that's, I don't know why that's still out there.
It's labor.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of that could be taken even to the rear. We do have, you know, a ground back there.
It's on the contractor, not Public Works.
Right, right, right.
Right. Whoever's responsible. I don't know what was in the contract just to keep it maintained.
A lot of that was picked up for the storm. A lot of that was cleaned up. So I'm not sure if it's still there. I didn't get by there yesterday. Is it?
It's still there the other day.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gallo.
I just want to make a comment on
The microphone?
... because I see it every day about
Gene Gallo complaining. I see that building six, seven, eight times a day. And it is a disgrace to the city of Bradenton. And I want you to know one thing. If you didn't learn it every in your life, remember low bid is not always the best way to go. And that's what you've got going on in that building. And I've told the chief, I'm not too sure in the future that the fire trucks are going to fit through the damn doors. Those are the most narrowest doors I've ever seen in my life. And fire trucks that are being built today are bigger. And they're going to continue to get bigger. So I don't know where all that came from. And it is a mess that could be cleaned up for the sake of the neighborhood. They got stuff piled out in front, and it looks like a dump. And the most I've ever seen is about three people working there. And a lot of times, for a week or so, there isn't anybody. So I don't know what's going on there. But I do know that a lot of the firefighters say we'd like to stay in the old Red Cross building and then go to that building that's being built, so.
Oh, Mr. Gallo, you did vote for that, though, by the way.
No, I didn't.
You didn't?
No.
I'll have to check that.
No. I don't ever remember seeing those bids come before city council.
We didn't have, we didn't have an open bid?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, we did. I think you voted.
Came before city council?
Sir.
I'd like to see that paperwork, unless I was already gone.
I don't recall exactly when it occurred, but it was, the bid was brought before council for approval.
Yeah. I'd like to see that. But Bill Ackles can find that for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, chief?
Good morning, and looking forward to working with you, Mr. Perry. Glad you're here. So, two things. The most important is that we are getting ready. If you walk down to the police department, wipe your feet. Because we've polished our floors, cleaned our glass, the accreditation team is going to be on site next week. The cleanliness of the agency is one thing. There's 244 other standards that we have to live up to. This is a very important process. We've taken very, very seriously. It's an all-hands-on-deck. So you'll see us looking pretty sharp over there. I know that there's some public comment opportunities. They're going to be touring, going to our District 2 substation, as well as some other locations, just to make sure that we meet all their expectations. But we're confident But we're confident, and I'm confident in the team, that we're going to be able to pull that off. And so stay tuned on that one. I always come to you with a good story. And I had an opportunity on Monday to participate in a podcast. And it was supposed to be about a half hour. You know me, when I get talking about good things happening in the city and particularly the police department, I tend to go on and on. And they asked a particular question about, in this era of police resource shifting to more of a reactive because of crime spiking up in certain cities. I said that here in the city of Bradenton, we take a little bit of a different approach. And we have maintained our proactiveness because I believe, and I know you all do too, because you support what we do in our budget, the importance of connecting with our youth. And I think that if we can get in a little earlier and systematically, systemically, deal with some of the issues that we're seeing with our youth. I know a couple of you have asked about the increasing amount of youth crime, gun crime with some of our young 20s and teens. What can we do about that? And I couldn't tell you how proud I was to just list a few things for them, and then really I ran out of time, that we are continuing to engage in while we're out there fighting crime and doing all those things. Just this month, we participated in To Dive Into Reading. I know, Mayor, you participated as well. That's a great initiative. It approaches, or it tackles all the Title I schools in the county. There's 15 of them. They actually serviced over 500 kids. And their goal there is to ensure that the reading levels of some of these kids don't deteriorate during the summer months. 27 of my folks volunteered for that initiative, spent two hours either going to O'Brieks or to the museum across the street. There was a couple of other locations, and spending two hours on one-on-one opportunities, reading to these kids. My favorite was Natalie. She was just a little darling. And I've promised her, if her reading scores stay up, I'm going to bring Maverick out to her school. She goes to Ballard. We continue to participate and take stock in children. We have 20 volunteers who provide weekly mentoring sessions to our kids at the police department. Big brothers, big sisters. We have six officers who engage in that. Manatee Broncos, that's a weekly thing. We send officers out there every week. They engage with the youth, they play football. They keep challenging us to a foot race, and my guys keep telling me, "Don't take that challenge, they'll beat us." And they're only 14, so I'm not sure what that tells me. Also, the Early Learning Coalition. We participate with five schools where we send folks in to read to these preschoolers. And so I really just wanted to, just to point out for you all how we're approaching things a little differently in this city. Instead of just getting out there and pushing away from some of the social aspects of policing, I think we're embracing it more. And I think that that's maybe where we're going to see the fruits of our labor pay off. And we are seeing it pay off, knock on wood. If you see the crime rates spiraling out of control in a lot of places in the nation, you're not seeing that right here. I think we've got a good handle on it, and I think it's a lot because of the efforts we put into the youth in our community. They're our future leaders, we all know that, and we're doing what we need to do to remain engaged with them. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, Patrick.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I've seen that on the national news about raising crime rates. And they don't specify, it's like post-COVID, and they don't really specify what is, why that is. Can you, in a nutshell, is it youth, is it poverty? I mean, what, why did COVID raise crime?
I think it's probably a longer discussion that I'd be happy to have. But a lot of it, what we're seeing is, we went through a year of not only COVID, but other things happening nationally where the police pulled back to a degree, particularly with COVID. There was not a lot of engagement in our schools and anywhere else. And so you had about 12 months of, and I'm going to, what's the old adage? Idle hands as well. And so now you're seeing the results of that. You know, you've got some younger, younger kids feeling a little empowered. They've had a lot of time on their hands. They haven't had connections with SROs, they haven't had connections with police. And you are seeing some youthful, not kids per se, but youthful offenses on the rise. Listen, here in Bradenton, we're seeing that as well. I mean, we are trending higher in a lot of our violent crimes. But I think we have a good handle on it. Our closure rate is maintaining, maintaining at a good level. It's, you know, we're hoping to kind of stem that, but yes. And that's probably a good, maybe workshop discussion, because there are some, you know, there are some trends that we're trying to keep an eye on, and we're not, we're not escaping those. We're experiencing those just like everywhere else. But I like to think as well that we're sticking with what we know best, and that's really connecting with our youth and doing everything we can. And perhaps that's why we're not seeing the same gains here than everywhere else.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you do a good job, I think, with youth. But when I heard the sheriff and you speak at a Tiger Bay event a couple of months ago, the sheriff even mentioned that adolescent crime is on the rise and it concerns him. And I've spoke about that from any kind of programming that we can do. And I say you do a good job. But, I mean, one of your most major events that you've probably had since you've been chief was right downtown where we crashed four squad cars, I believe, you told me. I don't know how many I've totaled, but that was chasing youths on a theft that started in our ward, went to Palmetto, came back. So, and then I read your police reports every week, or every day. And the most, I look at the age and their adolescent crime, just by looking at that, I think is up. So anything we can do to help with having programming, you know, there's some of these, I'm sure some of these kids don't care about programming, but we can do probably more, I'm supposed. And by the way, I mentioned earlier, I just want to correct the statement. I don't know if we were the first to institute body cameras, but I know we were the first government entity to approve them, because I followed it very closely. And what you, that's been in existence now for nine months a year. Is that, how do you feel about it today?
I was always a fan of the cameras, just not necessarily the cost because of what we're talking about right now. I didn't want to take away from some of the programic things that we do and safety equipment and what have you that our officers require. Body cameras have been great. I think they're fully embraced by the folks who wear them. There's not a day that goes by that I'm not asking to see a snippet. If we've had complaints that come in, just had a complaint day before yesterday, it's pretty easy for them to deliver the hard drive up to me and, you know, take a look. I promised you all, but I didn't send it because the file was too big to watch the five-minute lifesaving efforts. And he's not here, sergeant is of Officer Nuttall, who performed CPR, was up down, up on a balcony downtown and trying to balance and perform CPR with one arm. If you guys could see that, it's really just amazing. And I've been in law enforcement for 34 years, but it's given me a glimpse of things that I just haven't seen for years, being an administrator. And it's just fantastic, I think. Not only the transparency aspect of it, but what it allows us to see and improve upon with how we do business. It's really been, it's really been great. So we appreciate the support on that. They are expensive, and they remain expensive, but well worth, well worth the costs associated with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, chief, two things. Obviously, with the body cameras, it was same Tiger Bay club. I believe the sheriff, and I don't know if we've got any statistics, but said that almost 70% or plus of the complaints they get now are really squashed because the person says that, "Hey, this officer did this." Well, it's on body cam, and right away it shows it didn't do it. So it's the resources that might be going into that are helping. So it's a good thing for the protection of all of us. And then the other thing is, you got to thank John and Amanda Horn immensely from Annemarie Oyster Bar for the Dive Into Reading, because the hundreds of kids that have been doing that. And, you know, restaurants are mostly at Annemarie Oyster Bars and then O'Brieks. And it was fun to see the two young boys I had probably reading better than I did, which was a fun thing to see. But they were very smart, and, but they were challenged, and that's what it was. They liked it because it was challenging them to do more. And it, and a lot of it was not just reading. It's etiquette at a restaurant, it's trying to teach them manners and different things that help them in life and which will also help them in the future. So it's great to see that, and thanks for doing what you do.
And I, and during the podcast, I sung the praises of the horns and really the whole group. Because if you think about it, restaurants had to come together, open the doors when they normally don't, serve breakfast. It was a great breakfast. Backpacks were given out, just a fantastic, fantastic program.
No cost, they're doing that at the restaurant cost, so, yeah. Thank you. Chief, I mean, chief, Jim, chief of something.
Chief cook and bottle washer.
Chief recycler.
I alluded to it in my prior presentation, I had something to bring up. The mayor mentioned that during Elsa, we lost a significant portion of laurel oak that sits in front of the public works annex, and it had to be removed. And unfortunately, we have another damaged tree that I need to talk to you about. This is at Glacier Gates, too. This is a laurel oak. This photo is from a couple of days ago, when the tree should be fully engulfed in leaves. It's about 40 to 30% covered. And so as a result, we brought in an arborist. Our hope was that we would be able to inject the tree and try to save it. This is just a closer angle from the other side, where you get to see how sad it is. But basically, this is a, it's got about a 50-inch diameter. The arborist estimates that based upon that, it's pretty much at its life expectancy on a tree. Their recommendation to us was, they found a lot of hollow components within the core of the tree. They recommended to us to tape it off. So if you were out at the park, you'd see that we've taped around this. But I didn't want our guys to remove the tree before I came before you to let you know we're having to remove this tree from a safety standpoint.
So when do you want to euthanize the tree?
My guys will euthanize it as soon as humanly possible, let's put it that way. But I've also tasked them with finding me the largest caliper tree to replace it with, so that we don't start with a sampling, that we start with something that can form the basis of a full replacement for this tree.
Is the main part of it got rot inside it? Did you say they did a core sample? Or can we make a piece of art out of it with somebody to carve it?
No.
No? Why, you said no real quick.
He's an arborist, yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this is the life cycle of these trees. That they're, they were planted, you know, 60, 80, 90 years ago to grow fast. They grow much faster than live oaks. And whenever you have a fast-growing wood, it's got bigger cells. Water is the enemy, the cells rot out. Live oaks have very, very tight, coarse, dense cells. That's why, you know, they make shit keels out of them and stuff like that. But, you know, what happens with a tree like that? When you cut it down, the entire center will be gone.
Oh, yeah.
I've done thousands of them, and there is no saving them. There's no prolonging them. At Neal Park, there's a tree that's decomposing on us. And we, I told you, to save it for a few years, knowing that it's going to die, it's in that process right now, so, you know, you'll have to deal with that one next. But that's, there's no saving that tree.
Yeah, and as, we actually had the arborist did injections on several of the other oaks surrounding this park as a means to try and circumvent some of the future issues with them. But his recommendation was tape the site off and keep all pedestrians away from the tree until it can be removed, the sooner the better.
Right.
Yeah. One of the biggest problems we're going to have is public relations with this. Mr. Perry, the welcome to the world, if you cut down a tree, they're ready to cut you down. So, and that's already a controversial park in my ward. So I'd like some assistance and help, and maybe some assistance from Braden and Harold to say that we're not being malicious. This is for the protection and safety of the public and the, you know, I'm sorry that we're having to do this somehow. Get in front of it instead of me getting all these calls, which about, you know, ring off the hook as soon as that tree comes down.
To be honest with you, that's why I'm standing here talking.
I understand, but we need some public relations marketing on this. They're not cutting down the only tree that's in that park, frankly.
Within the core of the park, yeah. So the perimeter is lined with trees, but this is, this is in the segment.
Because it's going to be, gets a lot of attention.
And if we remember back when all of this started, that's how most of the trees were. You know, because we talked about it, and Mr. Gallo would remember more too. But we got criticized a lot, but a lot of the trees were sick already, very old. And I remember going over there when they're cutting some of them down, and there was no cores in the middle of them. For one storm, they would have blown over.
I can tell you for a fact that my landscaping ground staff have been begging me to have this tree removed for more than a year. And I told them that we need to exhaust any and all efforts to try and save it before we commit to that. And I think we've done that at this point and are at a point where we really need to do.
And get Jeannie maybe to do something.
She needs to do, yeah, I don't know what.
Code red?
Gets code red, yeah.
I have, I have some question on that. When we cut the tree down, take a photograph of the stump, and you'll find that the entire center will be gone, I guarantee you.
I agree. I mean, the tree that we lost in front of the annex, our staff had actually taped it off saying, "This is going to go in the storm."
Right.
And it did.
And that was nothing compared to what it could have been.
Did you have that arborist look at the other tree on the new, new part of the park where that banyan is strangling the tree?
Actually, there's a separate arborist that's going to be looking at that. And I think the recommendation is going to come back for that, was it invasive fig to be removed from that tree.
Right, because it's just, it's just like, it's just like a snake.
It's going to destroy it if we don't do something.
I don't know if it does, it looks like it would, because I've seen them in other areas where they just, they just take over.
All right, so consensus, obviously, do what you.
I don't need, I don't think I need a vote. I just wanted all of you to be aware before anything transpired. Thank you.
All right, Scott, anything?
I don't have anything.
Anything else for the good of the whole? Anybody? Anybody? All right, it'll be adjourned. Thank you.